Yeah, I say everybody, it is seven o'clock and I'd like to call the meeting for August 5th, 2020, or Planning Commission Meeting, two quarter. I'm gonna go ahead and recite the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Tuckfield is taking over Mr. Bentley's role tonight. And Mr. Tuckfield, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Shudo.
Here.
Mr. Provenzano.
Here.
Mr. Hardy.
Here.
Mr. Bentley. Mr. Oliver.
Here.
Mr. Tuckfield is present. Chairman, that's everyone but Mr. Bentley.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, we exclude Member Bentley from any and all roll call votes.
Motion made by Mr. Shudo.
Supported by Oliver.
Supported by Mr. Oliver. Mr. Tuckfield, call the roll, please.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yeah.
Mr. Provenzano?
Yep.
Mr. Tuckfield votes yes. Mr. Hardy?
Yes. Okay, next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes that were, that everybody should have received on 7/22 from Ms. Kavanaugh in the Planning Commission. Other than one, I think, typographical error, I didn't see anything that needed any changes, in my view. Does anybody have any comments on the approval of the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, there's no deletions, additions, or corrections. I make a motion, we approve the July 7, 2020 meeting minutes, and this is Member Shudo.
Support. Provenzano. Motion made by Mr. Shudo, supported by Mr. Provenzano, to approve the January 7, 2020 minutes. It was technically on 7/22. Mr. Tuckfield, call the roll, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Provenzano?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield votes yes. Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yeah.
All right, moving on to our agenda. If anybody has anything they'd like to add or delete, please share now. If not, let's make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no other motions, I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Mr. Tuckfield?
Support Provenzano.
Supported by Mr. Provenzano. Mr. Tuckfield, again, the roll, please.
Mr. Tuckfield votes yes. Mr. Provenzano?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yeah.
All right, under new business, extension of time, site plan, Wellington Center, permanent parcel 0819160001, located on the east side of Hayes, a half a mile south of 23 Mile, Section 19, Dominic Garrick petitioner. Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So yes, Wellington Center, this is a site plan that's been approved in the past. This is in the Section 19 of the township, as you mentioned, on the east side of Hayes Road, between 22 and 23 Mile. It's in the location of the old Burrs McComb Airport. This site plan was approved actually a number of years ago, and I believe only one piece of it has been constructed at this time, but they have come back a couple times previously, and they're back again to get an extension of their site plan approval.
Is the petitioner in the audience?
Um, that's the question here. We don't have, I'm sorry, what was his name? Uh, where's that? Dominic Garrick. We don't have him in the panelist side, but we do have three people on the attendee side. They have their hands raised. I'm not sure if any of these are petitioners.
Okay.
I can call on them, if you'd like.
No, if Dominic Garrick was your petitioner, I'm wondering, they're probably going to be under public comments, correct?
I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure. I think, I think Josh said, yes, we wait until public comments.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. At this time, I'm gonna open it up to the commissioners, the extension of time. Commissioners, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Tuckfield.
Go ahead, Mr. Tuckfield.
Uh, to Mr. Box, do you know what extension number this is?
I don't know for sure, but I, I think this is the third one. But I'm not 100% positive, but.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, Oliver here. To Mr. Box, has anything changed? That'd be three years. Has anything changed that would impact this property?
Uh, nothing physically in the area has changed that would impact this property, as far as other developments.
Any of our, okay, any of our ordinancees?
Got finished up.
Yeah, since, since this was initially approved, there is a senior housing development in the area that what has been built. I don't think it necessarily impacts this location physically or anything like that. And there's, there has not been any ordinance changes in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Oliver. Anyone else like to share? Commissioners? Okay, at this time, I'll open it up to the public. Ryan?
Okay, first we have Deborah Kane. Go ahead.
Hello.
Hi.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Ms. King.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, is this the meeting for the, I live right behind where you guys are building?
Okay.
Um, is, so the ones that we're talking about for the meeting tonight is the one from Image that's gonna connect into the, into the sub? Is that correct?
Uh, no, you know, well, we're talking about office buildings right now on Hayes.
Okay, okay, so, all right, I'm sorry, that's, I'm just waiting for that one to go when we have that meeting.
Gotcha.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. My apologies, everyone, I forgot to have address and everything. Go ahead, Ryan, who's up next?
Okay, we have Carmella Gowland. Go ahead. Carmella?
Ms. Gowland, are you there?
Looks like her phone is still muted.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm there. Am I here? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Wait, Ken, would you please?
I am with, I'm also with Deborah Kane on the property behind 23 and Luchman, or 26 and Luchman.
Okay.
We, we're kinda new at this stuff. We're at the wrong meeting right now. We're waiting for the other one to come up.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. Ryan, was there one more?
Uh, no, not right now, not right now.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Tuckfield. I just wanted to ask and clarify, so that I can understand. Are these individuals waiting for another item on tonight's meeting? Or are they thinking that they're at the wrong meeting? It sounded like they may think they're coming for another night, and I, I'm not sure if they should wait for another night, or if their item is later this evening.
Good point, Mr. Tuckfield. Ms. Kane, are you still there?
Yes.
Where, can you put your name and address and your general location?
Uh, my address is 18384 London Drive. It's on the corner of London and Image.
And that's Mile Road and other crossroad, maybe to give us an idea? We're trying to think of what you're, what you're looking at. Are you looking at rezoning?
What they're, but we got, we got, we got in the mail for the meeting tonight, and it's about the property on Lockman between 25 and 26 Mile Road.
Oh, okay.
For the ones where they're gonna build, I think they're extending Wolverine, that one.
All right, that's our last item, so, and we have four items today, so.
Okay.
Just hang on for a while.
Not a problem, thank you.
And we'll get to that. All right, thank you guys very much.
So anybody who wants to, any public comments for that agenda item, you guys can just lower your hands right now, and then raise them when that comes up, and then I can call on you then.
Good. Okay, let's bring it back to the commissioners. Do we have a motion to extend time for Wellington question?
Mr. Chairman, there's no discussion. I'd like to extend the time for the site plan for Wellington Center for one year. Permanent parcel 081916001, located on the east side of Hayes, half mile south of 23 Mile, pursuant to the planning consultant's recommendation. This is Member Shudo.
Thank you, Member Shudo. We have somebody that's getting a second? Okay.
Oliver will second that.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Mr. Tuckfield, go ahead with the roll.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yeah.
Mr. Provenzano?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield votes yes. Mr. Hardy?
Mr. Hardy votes yes, too. Okay, on to the next item. Item B, rezoning request. Residential one-family suburban R-1-S to Office Low Rise 01. Permanent parcel 0804400034 located on the northwest corner of 25 Mile and Broughton Road, Section 4. Looks like Salvatore Mercio petitioner. Mr. Box?
Uh, this is Mr. Skirdo speaking on this item.
Okay.
Um, okay, we looked at the properties. These are two properties on the northwest corner of 25 Mile and Broughton. Um, as you mentioned, the zoning change requested is from R1S, single family, to 01 Office. Uh, we did review the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, which is Public Act 110 of 2006, as well as the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, which is Public Act 33 of 2008. Um, based on the zoning act, the intent of the zoning act, when you do a rezoning, is to support what is in the master plan as stands currently in the township. Um, based on what we found, is the zoning, uh, the planning act calls for this area to be residential, and the zoning at, at density is like three dwelling units per acre, and the zoning in place, the R1S supports that exactly, because that calls for a dwelling unit density of three units per acre. Um, I wanna point out that the master plan is in process of rewrite, but yet we still have to go back, what's, we have to use what's on the books now. Um, based on the master plan not being supported by the zoning change, and the current zoning actually supporting the current master plan, we gotta recommend denial of this request.
Okay. So is there anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Skirdo?
Uh, the only thing I'm gonna add is I think, we're not, I just think the request is premature at this time, and applicant should probably wait until we get this master plan better in line to see what we, what the Planning Commission decides to do with this whole area. Our one concern is, our biggest concern is if we start rezoning parcels non-residential on 25 Mile Road, does that set a precedent to allow non-residential development to creep up and down 25 Mile Road and some of the other nearby areas, thus watering down our efforts to try to get the downtown created, you know, half mile away?
Okay. Commissioners, I'll open it up to you guys. Anybody? Petitioner, are you in the audience? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Oliver, go ahead.
I had just a quick question. Uh, Mr. Skirdo, or Josh, right now that, what do we, what do we got staggered into a half a dozen houses in that little corner there?
Yeah, I know, two definitely, and I know there's some others in there, too. I don't know what the exact count is.
And to what you just discussed, it's probably, uh, less than 400 feet away from a residential development, a new development.
Correct.
With that, okay. I'm just looking at the area, I'm trying to figure. All right, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Okay, I did it a little out of order. Is a petitioner in the audience?
He is.
Okay. I'm wondering if he has anything he'd like to share, and then we'll take it back to the commissioners.
Mr. Demi Curio, you can speak. Here he is.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Ken, go ahead, sir.
For some reason, I can't see you, but I can hear you. I do have my engineer, Mr. Bill Thompson from Lunar Engineering, and he was representing us. Um, all I wanna say is that I've owned that property for the last seven, eight years, nine years maybe, and I really don't see it to be a prime location for, for four houses or three houses here on that corner. It's just, I, I just don't see it. And I am, I am a builder, developer, and we are in, in the leasing business, too. We, we do own other buildings, and we're landlords. I would love to have a nice building there at that corner, just as you're entering your little future downtown, and I think it would be a great landmark, and we would like to design it accordingly to, uh, please the, the McComb Township as well, okay? But I just like it as you're entering the township hall, and, and we try to keep it down, not commercial, just professional offices. And I, I'm not trying to maximize anything. I just want a nice little building, as we have a couple others in, in Shelby Township here, by 22 and Hayes, and I wanted to build something very similar to that. I also have one on Bandai by 21 and Shelby as well, and we've done very well with them. I thought it was a good thing, win-win situation for all of us, myself and the township as well.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioners, now it's your turn. Anybody else have anything they'd like to share?
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Tuckfield.
Go ahead, Mr. Tuckfield.
Uh, to Mr. Skirdo, you mentioned that, you mentioned that you felt that this was not, maybe an appropriate time to, uh, to bring this forward with regards to where our master plan is, and sort of in the middle of closing out one, if you will, and starting up a new iteration of it. Have you, um, have you worked on this, have you worked on this area at all? And have you, have you worked on, have you, have you thought about it? Have you game planned it all? Is there any conversation at all so far on this?
Uh, it's a little bit premature yet. We're collecting background data, and we're getting ready to get out for public input. And we haven't, we'd like to collect all that back, all, you know, support data before we start making recommendations of a planning commission to consider.
Okay, so, so just to summarize, we're transitioning to a new master plan, and you guys who are planning consultants who are working on the master plan have not studied that area specifically for land use. Mr. Box, who is relatively new to the township, hasn't necessarily studied it, and the Planning Commission has not recently studied it. So right now, we're, we're looking at an area that the last time it was studied had a, had a very different use set than what's being proposed, and it's not yet been taken into consideration as part of a larger, as part of a larger research process. Is that, is that relatively accurate?
That's accurate.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome, Mr. Tuckfield. Mr. Skirdo or Mr. Box, do we have kind of a, an idea when the master plan will be done?
Um, by the time we get through drafting, get it out for a three-month public hearing comment, or two-month public hearing comment, we're looking at the first quarter of 2021.
Okay, so it's not that far away?
No.
All right. Um, all, right now, I'll open it up to the public. Does anybody have anything they would like to say? Ryan?
If you would like to speak, you can raise your hand digitally, and I'll call on you. Anne Marie Grzanka, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name there. Uh, it, Anne Marie, I'm sorry, but you, you have to upgrade your Zoom client in order to, uh, in order to speak. It won't let me unmute you. Her Zoom client's outdated. What I could do, if the panelists think it's okay, I could move her over to the panelists just for her public comment, and then I can remove her back to attendee, if that's okay?
Yes, please do that.
Okay. All right, Anne Marie? You should be able to, you should be able to talk.
Anne Marie, are you there?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
We can. Would you please take your name and your address for us, please?
My name's Anne Marie Grzanka, five, or one, wait, what is it? 55125 Broughton. I'm sorry, I have but me and my husband are here, so he's gonna talk on my behalf.
Oh, okay, well, can you have your husband state his name, too?
Sure, Paul Burdick, same address.
Thank you, Paul. Go ahead.
We're just really wondering what the plan is for building on that site. Obviously, I've heard you guys say that, what you've said, you know, stated about the, the master plan, but we're just curious what the, the actual plan is for building on those two sites. I, I believe you mentioned a, an office building. But is that?
Is it etched in stone? Is that what he's gonna do, or is he not completely sure?
Okay, as of right now, we don't have the master plan done, so there's no way of kind of predicting that that land will be used for. Um, it's zoned as a chance to fester plan, and then we do three months of opening it up to the public. Chances are, well, everything will be postponed until that. I hope that answers your question. Paul, are you still there?
Yeah, that, that absolutely answers it. That's, that's, that's excellent. Thank you.
Welcome. Ryan, is there anyone else?
Um, not at this time.
Okay, then I'll bring, Ryan, before we go, I'm viewing Bill Thompson's screen, and I don't understand what that is. Is that something coming up?
Uh, Bill Thompson shared his screen. I don't know if he did that unintentionally.
Okay.
But, uh, I mean, we can, I think I can unshare the screen.
Okay, that's all right.
You want me to leave it up?
Bring it back to the commissioners. Let's bring it back to the commissioners. Do we have a motion from anyone?
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Tuckfield.
Go ahead, Mr. Tuckfield.
Uh, if, if, if you would humor the request, I've been just curious to see if Mr. Thompson had any, anything to comment on it. Usually, he, he has comments on these things when they come before him. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't anything he wanted to add on this particular item, if, if you're willing to accept that possibility right now.
I am more than willing. Mr. Thompson, are you still there?
It's like he's staying muted.
Yeah, he's here, but he's muted.
Okay. That being said, I did have a question for Mr. Box and Mr. Skirdo. If, if we were to, if we were to follow along with the recommendation and say that perhaps this might be something that could be looked at, but that now is not the appropriate time, would you recommend, us recommend denial, or us recommend postponement?
We're, we're thinking that through right now, if you give us a second.
No problem.
Um, because what, you know, the concern I do have about postponement at this time is we're asking a case to be put on hold for six months, nine months, something like that. I don't know what the typical procedures for the Planning Commission, they're willing to hold off that long.
My, I guess my only concern would be, I, I mean, there's a wider question of should the parcel be rezoned? But I think the question right now is should it be rezoned prior to the master plan being redone, which is not necessarily the same thing? And if, if we end up saying no because of that, or want to postpone it because of that, I, I don't know what's the most effective way to do it, and I would hate to cause ourselves problems in the future because we denied something, um, perhaps because it was the wrong time to do it. And I, I, maybe I could see a reason to deny it for not that reason, but again, I just, I wanna make sure we, we dot our i's and cross our t's here correctly.
If you're, if you're comfortable waiting that long, you could, you could recommend postponing a decision until the master plan is complete.
Would it be appropriate to do it for a date certain, or just an open-ended until it's complete?
I would leave it open-ended, because we, you know, getting a master plan approved
It's kind of a big, it's kind of a big project.
Yeah, and then you're always public hearing project, things, and we have to send notices to all the surrounding communities, and they get 63 days to review them and send back comments, so I'd rather leave it open-ended, if that helps.
All right. I, I, I think I would rather postpone this than, than, or recommend postponing, because I believe this is a recommendation to the, to the township board, not an action. So if, if it's possible to make a, a motion at this point, Mr. Chairman, I, I would recommend, or I would make the motion to recommend postponing of this rezoning until such time that the master plan has been completed, and the renewal of the master plan has been completed and adopted for the township in general, and specifically this area. And that would be for permanent parcels 0804400034 and 0804400035, and it would be based upon the fact that we're in transition between staff and master plan, and that it would be appropriate to make sure that the, the best interest of the township is being observed with this rezoning.
Okay, that sounds good to me.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Before we move forward, should we, should we ask Mr. Demi Curio what his thoughts are on this? Um, I guess we could do that, sure.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I could, does it, does it make sense to make sure we have a second on the motion, so we can have discussion after that? Would that, would that be appropriate? I'm fine either way, I just wanna make sure we follow procedure.
I think there was a motion made. I think we need to finish that first, before we do anything else. So Mr. Tuckfield made a motion to postpone, basically until the planning, until the planners finish the master plan, and then we will review the rezoning at that time. Do I have a second?
I gotta, I gotta question. This is Oliver. I gotta question first.
Go ahead, Mr. Oliver.
But by taking these actions of postponing it, would, would we be telling the developer that it's possibly gonna be changed, or it's gonna be changed? Um, I don't, I, I wouldn't wanna put a false sense of some action, maybe future, taken down the road, and, and this developer waiting for that action, and it, and it doesn't ever come. So that's another thing I wanna be aware of. The board should be aware of that. Uh, you know, we, we don't wanna give this developer an idea that, well, if he waits a year, that we're gonna agree to zone it the way he wants to zone. That, that's my only concern here, was postponing it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just to make sure I have, I'll, I clarify the motion for, for seconding, or lack thereof. Uh, Mr. Oliver, I understand your point. Um, the only thing I would say is that the postponement is less based on the merits of the rezoning than staff is recommending. Their recommendation is not necessarily based on, on what they expect the parcel to be, but that we have not renewed the guidance for the parcel yet. Um, and I, I understand your point. But the reason I think it'd be fair to do it is since we're not, if, if we go based on their recommendation, we're, we're denying it based on something we're stating is in the past, as we're renewing something, and I would think that would have implications of as we're renewing something, and I would think that would have implications as well. But I'm fine however everybody wants to handle it. I just want to make sure I'm clarifying that's the reason for the motion.
Okay.
Mr. Skurdo? Go ahead, Mr. Oliver, I'm sorry.
Do you guys want to weigh in on this a little bit, make sure we're doing this right?
Yes.
I think, yeah, only weigh in on this, we should, the motion I saw is pretty clear that you're just not committing any decision whatsoever until the master plan is complete. You can strengthen that motion by making that statement that you are remaining, you're, you know, because of this motion, you are not guaranteeing a rezoning.
Right, and I would, I would be willing to clarify that, that the motion does not give support in any way to any rezoning or motioning. It's not really speaking to the rezoning itself at all. So at such point that it came back up, I would certainly reserve the right to vote to recommend denial or approval based on the information at that point. It doesn't speak to what would happen at that point.
All right, Mr. Tuckfield, can we redo the motion to make sure it's all in there?
I can, although it's.
There's a lot in what you said earlier, but I think we could. Are you there?
I'm here. I'm not sure if I'm breaking up or you're breaking up, or one of us was, I think. I'm happy to restate the motion. I would say, Mr. Chairman, I think it may have, it may have failed for lack of support. I'm not sure if anybody's supporting it. I can, if anybody's interested in making, in me restating it, if they're thinking about supporting it, but I guess that would be up to you how you'd like me to handle it.
I think I'd like you to restate it and kind of look at what Mr. said as well. So the petitioner notes.
Understood.
It may pass, or it may not, okay? So go ahead and restate it.
I've got to do one of my novel, my novel motions here, so let me, give me, give me a second to think about my paragraph. Hang on. I would, I would make a motion to recommend postponement of the rezoning of the two stated parcels, 0804-400034 and 0804-400035, based on the fact that the master plan for this area is outdated, and that we are in the middle of refreshing it, based on the fact that our staff is just coming on board and has not had a chance to study this parcel with regards to the master plan and the wider development of the township, and also that this would be postponed until such time that the master plan was completed, and at such time, if we are to look at, when we are to look at this again, that this motion does not in any way state support of the rezoning, only that it should be looked at once this area has been studied for proper context.
Nice motion, Mr. Tuckfield. Mr. Oliver, does that satisfy your concern?
Yeah, pretty much. I support that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Tuckfield, and it's aborted by Mr. Oliver. Mr. Tuckfield, go ahead and call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Tuckfield votes yes. Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
No.
Mr. Provenzano?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, that motion passed four to one.
Thank you, sir. Right. Item C, site plan, McComb Industrial Unit 12, permanent parcel 0818326012, located on the west side of Industrial Drive, north of 22 Mile, Section 18, Joe Cusmano petition. Mr. Skurdo or Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you mentioned, it's located north of 22 Mile, on the west side of Industrial Drive. This is Zoned M1 Industrial, Light Industrial at this time. All departments within the township are generally okay with this site plan. It is a speculative building, so we don't have a specific use for it yet. So there are some things that, you know, we may need to discuss in the future, you know, depending on what the land use would be, whether it would be a special land use, you know, what type of tenant comes into the building, also with regards to the outdoor storage area, you know, depending on the tenant, what they would be storing out there. But for the most part, I think all of the departments within the township are recommending approval at this time.
Okay. Is the petitioner in the audience, Mr. Cusmano?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything you'd like to share?
Not at this moment. Sounds pretty good to me.
Okay. Then I'll turn it back to the commissioners. Commissioners, do you have anything you'd like to share? Hearing none? I'll open it up to the public. Mr. Oliver, are you there?
I am.
Did you have something you wanted to say? I saw your name pop up.
Oh, you know, I was fooling around with my mute button, so sorry.
Okay. All right, then let's open it to the public. Ryan, is there anybody?
If you, anybody would like to speak, please raise your hand digitally, and I will call on you.
All right, hearing none?
None at this time.
Bring it back to the commissioners for a motion. Anybody would like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Tuckfield.
Just a quick note for the record, I know we're on motions for this, but we have a chat that goes along this webinar, and we have somebody on chat who says they're in attendance for Arcadia Development. They say they've got video but no apparent audio. I believe Arcadia is the next item, so I just wanted to put it out there for, for our IT department. I don't know if they can work with them or look into that at all, but we have the next person coming up, doesn't seem to have their stuff going on, so I'm not sure if there's any way we can help them in advance of the item.
Yeah, I'm seeing, I'm seeing that right now.
Yeah.
Okay, we need, we need to make a motion, although one sees the site plan for McComb Industrial Park.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Oliver.
Mr. Oliver here. I move, we approve the site plan for McComb Industrial Unit 12, parcel number 0818326012, located on the west side of Industrial Drive, north of 22 Mile Road, Section 18.
And I'll second that.
And miss, motion made by Mr. Oliver, seconded by Mr. Shudo. Mr. Tuckfield, please call the roll.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Provenzano?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield votes yes. Mr. Hardy?
Yes. All right, we're now on item D, final plan for Wolverine Estates North Site Condominiums, permanent parcel 0805400005, located on the west side of Luckman Road, a half mile north of 25 Mile, Section 5, Arcadia Development LLC petitioner. Mr. Tuckfield, Mr. Box, or Mr. Skurdo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Mr. Box. As you mentioned, this is along Luckman Road. This development is a residential development between 25 Mile and 26 Mile. It is mostly a continuation of some other neighboring developments. The roadways continue directly into this development from, I believe it's Wolverine Country Club Number 1. Development has, as compared to some other residential developments in the township, relatively small number of houses, a dozen or so houses, and some detention basins. And I believe all, at this time, all departments are recommending approval for this development.
Okay, is the petitioner in the audience?
He is, or she is, and that would be, I believe that's, I'm sorry, I missed the name. Cousino, Kristin Cousino? Go ahead.
Hi, Chris, Chris Cousino on behalf of the petitioner.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay, Cousino, go ahead.
So I guess no further comments. We have gone through the process to obtain all of our construction permits, which we have done, so we've posted our sureties and inspection fees, and we're certainly excited about the development and looking forward to starting.
At this time, I'll bring it back to the commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Tuckfield.
Anything you'd like to share?
I'm not sure you broke up there, or at least you broke up on mine. Am I able to go ahead?
Okay.
You are able to go ahead, absolutely.
All right, very good. I had a question, I had a question for Mr. Box and Mr. Skurdo. We may have looked at this on the preliminary plan. I glanced around for my plans, may have given them back on that one, even though I don't really try to keep them. I don't remember talking about this, but a question with regards to the cul-de-sac of the west end of this parcel. It looks like it might have a very strange intersection with the north extension of Faldo Drive, which is currently just west of the stated parcel. How is that expected to tie in, and how are those parcels going to intersect with a future development? Do you know how that's, that's supposed to go?
This is Mr. Box. I do not know. Give me a minute here, I'm gonna pull up, pull the map up. I do not have one in front of me.
I'm actually, yeah. There's a little, so Player Drive runs, runs east and west about the depth of one lot south of that property, and it curves north when it gets past the end of the property, and there's a stub street called Faldo that curves off. Typically, I would expect that sub-street, if there's a, if the parcel to the west is developed, I would think that Faldo would tie into that new parcel. So I don't know if the cul-de-sac is temporary, because an eventual street would then tee there, or if the cul-de-sac is supposed to be permanent, or how that would work. But it referenced that the cul-de-sac would, might be more than temporary, and I was just, I was, I want to make sure we didn't, we didn't have something going in that wasn't gonna be able to tie in later.
I think I see what you're talking about, on the, it would be on the western end of the development.
Correct.
And I believe that is, at this time, vacant. I'm trying to find that on the, on the area right now as well. I believe that's vacant land over there. So there is a possibility that it, development could move further to the west at a future time. But it looks like on the area, there's some wetlands there that might be preventing that.
Okay. I don't know if the petitioner wants to chime in on that at all, you might have a better memory of how this, how this went last time as well. I just, do you have any, anything you can shed on this, Mr. Cousino?
Mr. Cousino, are you there? Are you on mute?
She doesn't show him. Yeah, he's not here.
Doesn't show him at the panel anymore.
He's got his hand up on the guest side.
No, here we go. There you go. Sorry about that.
It's okay. We're all, we're all learning as we go. So, yes, I can answer that, that cul-de-sac is temporary. It will be removed upon the development of the adjacent property to the west. It has been more or less laid out, and that stub road will tie into the future development.
Okay, very good. And then the other question that I had was just to confirm what we have on our drawings here, and that is that construction entrance would be off of Luckman for some significant portion of development to avoid use of the existing residential streets. Is that, that accurate?
That is correct. There's an existing driveway that once serviced, the former house on the property that we will continue to use for the development of the property.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Those are all my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. Commissioners, anyone else? All right, at this time, I'd like to open it to the public. As you get ready to speak, what I would like you to understand is that we're gonna take all of your questions, and we're gonna kind of gather them together, and then we'll have our planning department make a comment at the end. So just note, we're not ignoring you. We're just, we're just gonna take all the questions, gather them all up, and then we'll answer them at the end. So Ryan, do we have our first caller? Ryan?
Yes, we do. Richard Gowan, go ahead.
Mr. Gowan, if you would please state your name and your address, please. You might be on mute. All right, Ryan, let's come back to him.
I think, I think he just unmuted.
Okay.
Let's see what he, if he says anything. Richard, can you hear us? Okay, well, there's another person named Carmella Gowan. I wonder if they are trying to share an account or sharing a computer or something like that, so we will move on to her.
Okay.
Go ahead, Carmella.
Hi, my name is Carmella Gowan. I'm at 56, oh, 53 Image Drive, and we are concerned about the driveway through and to the other, to the development.
Okay.
Are they cutting through image, or they, is it just for development only, or is it, is it gonna be a permanent drive-through there? That's what our concern is.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gowan. We'll answer all the questions after everybody speaks, so. Let's get everybody in, and then we'll answer your question, Mr. Gowan.
All right. This is also, this is also Richard Gowan.
Okay.
Okay, and my main concern is, is that we got the final hearing, and this is the final notice that we're hearing about this. We have not gotten any kind of a, hold on, let me, let me back the voice down on my computer. Hey, can you hear me now?
Much better. Good job.
Okay, I'm sorry. First of all, we did not get any kind of a layout, any kind of a master plan, any kind of a lot layout showing the infrastructure between Image Drive and the other subdivision, which would be Wolverine over there. Our main concern is, are they gonna put a street through from Image Drive, continuing through over to the Wolverine subdivision?
Yeah, answer at the end.
Yes, and you can just, you know, we can go through all of that towards the end. But my main concern is, is, you know, we're concerned with the traffic coming through here, the wear and tear on the roads, the increase of the overall residential traffic. We have sanitation trucks, residential trucks, school buses, mail, UPS, FedEx, and our main concern is, is the wear and tear on the traffic, okay? So we do not, you know, first of all, there wasn't a master plan that was sent out to all of the residents along here, so we could either vote on this or have some kind of a hearing on it. We're going through this webinar, which is all new to us, so we're kind of like, not very good at it. You know, we appreciate the Commissioner Tuckfield and Mr. Box, if they could get back with us and give us some kind of a reasonable, reasonable explanation for a lot of this, and at least verify with us a master plan that we can all take a look at and vote on, like everybody else is in the meeting. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan, is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Yes, Danielle Miller, go ahead, or Melor.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you. Please state your name and address, Ms. Miller.
Yeah, this is Danielle Miller. I'm at 18263 Player Drive. I have a couple of questions, actually. First, on the original plan that we saw, we saw that there were gonna be two detention ponds. I wanted to know if those were still in their, in those same locations, and. ponds, I wanted to know if those were still in their same, in those same locations, and they were supposed to have, or we saw on the plan that they were going to be having fences around them, was curious if those were going to be constructed, and when those would be constructed, because those would be backing up, one of them should be backing up to my property. The next question I have is about the trees that are currently at the drain, I was wondering if those are staying, or if those are going to be removed. And then the last question I had was when the construction start date would be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan, anyone else?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Box, Mr. Skurdle, would you like to answer some of the questions from our citizens?
Sure. This is Mr. Box, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I guess I'll answer the, some of the later questions first here, the detention ponds, yes, there will be detention ponds, and yes, there will be a fence around them. As far as when those will be constructed, in terms of the process as a whole, maybe the petitioner can weigh in on that, what their overall process will be, but likely that will be early on in the construction process, I would assume. And as far as construction start date, we really don't have that yet, because this obviously would need to be approved, recommended for approval tonight, and then go to the Board of Trustees and recommend for approval there, there's some other things that they would have to do, I believe, with Engineering Department as well before any construction would begin, so it's hard to say exactly when construction would begin on this, but it's certainly not something that's going to start, you know, next week or anything like that. With regards to the street connecting through Image Drive, there is a parcel in between that's a consumer's right-of-way, based on the plans, it looks like those, the connection will not be made at this time through that consumer's right-of-way, again, maybe the petitioner can weigh in on that, if that's a discussion that they have had with consumers or with the neighboring development.
Okay. I think, I think Richard Galen, and I apologize, sir, if I pronounce your name wrong, talked about the traffic. Did you want to address the traffic at all, Mr. Box?
Well, as the petitioner mentioned, the construction traffic would be coming in directly off of Luckman Road, and then once construction is complete, this subdivision is connected directly to the subdivision to the south. It looks at this time like, because there's going to be the gap in the consumer's right-of-way in this, between it and the division, subdivision to the north, so it looks like most of the traffic will be coming through the subdivision to the south. In later phases, as the petitioner mentioned, this development might extend westward, and at that time it might connect with other neighboring developments, that, you know, at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hardy, Mr. Box, Mr. Hardy, Danielle, Danielle just expanded on her question in the chat box, she just wanted to.
Oh, the trees, yes, okay. Go ahead, what are we going to do with the trees?
I will defer that to the petitioner, it looks like that's something he can address in his plans, but it looks like most of them might be removed, and I'll let him answer that question.
Alright, petitioner, would you like to address some of the things that have been shared by your citizens?
Yes, sir. So as far as the trees, those are within the existing drain easement, as part of our permit to work within the drain easement, we're required to make drain improvements, so those trees will be removed as part of our permit with the Drain Office.
Alright. Is there anything else, Mr. Cousino, would you like to share before we continue on?
No, no, I guess just as far as timing and sequencing, so certainly pending us getting through the approval process, we would be looking to have a pre-construction meeting with the township, with construction here, hopefully sometime next month, once we get through all the approvals.
Okay, alright, so just a rough timeline, next month. Alright? Let's bring it back to the commissioners. Commissioners, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I did have one question, if I could, this is Commissioner Duckfield.
Absolutely, Mr. Duckfield.
To Mr. Cousino, could you address the street connection through the consumer's easement? I remember, again, I think this has been a while since we saw the initial plan, I remember we discussed that, but could you refresh our memory on the time, potential timeline for a tie-in to image? Not sure if Mr. Cousino, oh, is he unmuted now? Oh, there he is.
Sorry, sorry about that. So, yes, in conversations with your township engineer, when we did go through the preliminary site plan approval, the discussions was just to tie that road short, it's property that is flat-out owned by consumers, it's not in easement, so there was no interest by either parties to extend that road at this time.
Is, and again, I think this is stuff we discussed at the last time we looked at this, but it's been, I think it's been over a year, if I remember correctly. Is there a reason that we're not making that into a cul-de-sac instead of a stub street, or are we expecting that sometime in the future that might end up being connected?
So I think the expectation is, at some point, it will make the connection by us putting in the temporary cul-de-sac on the far west, that covers any long dead-end sections that are required to be covered by your ordinance, because that's just a short, call it a hundred and fifty-foot section of roadway, it doesn't meet the requirement for a cul-de-sac.
Okay, very good. Alright, I think that was all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Duckfield, do we have a motion?
Chairman, if there's no other questions or comments, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of the final plan for Wolverine Estates North Site Condominiums, permanent parcel zero eight zero five four zero 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 five, Arcadia Development petitioner, that's based on the fact that it meets our ordinance, matches our master plan, and also based on recommendations from the appropriate department heads.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second by Oliver.
Seconded by Mr. Oliver. Mr. Duckfield, call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Duckfield votes yes, Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Schudo?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Provenzano?
Now, until you're muted.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, that vote is unanimous.
Okay, motion passes, thank you. We are now on to old business. Any old business, Mr. Box, that you would like to share?
None at this time.
Okay. And we'll move to public comments on non-agenda items, with a reminder that you have four minutes. Mr., or Mr. Ryan, is there anyone that would like to have, please pause, is there anyone that would like to speak?
None at this time.
Okay. Commissioners' comments? Anyone?
Yeah, I have one quick one to Josh, maybe the next meeting, can we look at our bylaws and have you look at them, see if we need anything to be updated? Would that be possible?
Sure.
And I'd like to congratulate our election committee, our Clerk's Office for an election well-run, and I'd like to congratulate all the winners, and I think we had a good crew of people out there, and it went pretty smooth, and I'm sure November will be the same, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Schudo. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Duckfield.
Go ahead, Mr. Duckfield.
I'd just like to echo some of Mr. Schudo's comments, you know, we're the planning commission here, we don't necessarily deal with the political end of it as much, but certainly affects everyone in the township, just want to congratulate all the people who got through the primary yesterday. Mr. Oliver, one of our members here, made it through a pretty difficult primary with a lot of quality candidates, so just want to congratulate him on that, and hope he does well going forward, as well as all the other people who participated in the election, it was an interesting thing, there was a lot of candidates that mentioned the master plan, and the importance of paying attention to it, and it was good to hear that being referenced and people understanding that it was necessary. Also, to echo Mr. Schudo's other comments, I want to thank our clerk for running a good election process, all the other stuff we do, it's kind of one of the bedrocks of it, and our couple boards here were well-represented, I saw Mr. Hardy out at the precincts yesterday working as a volunteer, it was good to see him, so I'm Mr. Piper from the ZBA out there, and a lot of people working hard, so it's not really our board per se, but it does affect us, and just want to thank everybody for being out there and working hard, and congratulate the people who move forward, and thank the people who ran for their dedication and attention to the process.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone else? Well, he won't say anything, so I will, but Aaron Duckfield is correct, Clerk's Office did a wonderful job, Christie Posey did a nice job organizing it at the top, but people like Aaron, who were in charge of five precincts, and were running around like a chicken with his head cut off, so to speak, but a very knowledgeable chicken, did just a great job of keeping our precinct, number twenty-nine, getting it all in order, and making sure that everything was done properly, and I know he will never toot his own horn, but Mr. Duckfield, kudos to you. And then lastly, our condolences to the Oliver family on the loss Charlie of your sister, we are so very, very sorry, I know you're going through a tough time, and just to know that we're all there in spirit with you. And that's all I have. Anyone else?
I have one, yes, thank you for the kind words, Mr. Hardy. I just want to echo the fact also that we had three of our planning commission members working on the election, and boy, I tell you what, I don't know if a lot of communities do that, but we do it, and I'm really proud of it, and it's nice, it's just nice to see everyone working together. And at that, I'll take my liaison right now, Mr. Hardy, and give you an update.
Absolutely, perfect.
Alrighty. Along with all those things the board's been involved in, we were able, through Josh and the planning department, to adopt a new ordinance, a zoning ordinance, it's a conditional rezoning, and I think that's going to be very used in a lot of cases, and I think it's going to help us, it's going to help Mr. Skurdle and Mr. Box on a lot of things in the township, so we move forward there, so I think that was a good win for the township. And other than thanking everyone that helped, thanking all the voters that come out, and Mr. Hardy, again, thank you for the kind words, we, our family is working through it, and that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Alright, if there's not, if nobody else, then we'll open it up to ZBA, Aaron, I can't remember if you're having the meeting, or had the meeting, or you're having it tomorrow.
We had one last month, and we have another one tomorrow, I'm going to have to try to match you for efficiency in running a meeting, because I think we have seven items, it might be, I think, seven items, Mr. Box, I think it might be a record for us for the last few years, so that's going to be.
I think it's five.
Five? Maybe, maybe the length of the agenda just made me feel like it was longer. We've got a fair amount of meetings, items, I'm going to have to be efficient with it, but at our last meeting, we did elect officers, it was our first meeting of the year, so we have that set, a good crew for the remainder of the term, which ends the first of January next year. And just a comment that we made last time, we have some more pool variances coming up, it's certainly something we need to look at going forward, and it still is something we need to look at going forward, so I know we mentioned it last time, but it's still a need, and hopefully we'll have something to come forward with on that shortly, so that's all I had, we'll have some more meetings and get some more work done.
Sounds good, thank you, Mr. Duckfield. Planning Department?
I already went through it, Mr. Hardy, I jumped ahead a little bit.
No, the Planning Department.
Oh, the planning, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay. Mr. Box?
Thank you. Yes, so a couple items, first of all, Mr. Oliver already mentioned, the board did pass our conditional rezoning amendment, that will take effect very shortly. We have probably, what, two or three developments right now that I think are going to make pretty quick use of that, so it was very timely to get that approved. Mr. Hardy, I did want to mention, and I know we've talked offline a little bit about the possibility of a subcommittee for some ordinance assistance, Mr. Bentley had indicated his willingness to participate in internal talks, we decided it was best to create some type of a committee, small enough that you won't meet quorum, if they, you know, if the folks come in here and meet with us. So I will, I'll leave that up to you, but that's definitely something that we would encourage if you so choose to do that. And to echo everyone else's sentiments, congratulations to all of the candidates, especially Mr. Oliver, on your victory yesterday. It's, you know, we also, you know, as staff, don't get into the politics side of things, but it's nice to see everybody coming together and working at these precincts, and showing our faces, representation for the planning commission, and just the planning world in general, so congrats to everybody.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Box, and the subcommittee, I'd like to wait until the next meeting when Mr. Bentley is here, and then maybe we can put something together at that time.
Sure.
Okay, alright, that's all we have for tonight, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Skurdle? Seconded?
I'll support that, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Duckfield.
Thank you, Mr. Duckfield, Mr. Duckfield, call the roll, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Schudo?
Yes.
Mr. Duckfield votes yes, Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Provenzano?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Another very good meeting, folks, thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.